Hello and welcome to the Pittsburgh City Council's regular meeting of Tuesday, June 30th, 2020. My name is Louise Chris and with us today is Megan Agen, our sign language interpreter. The following is a list of legislation to be introduced by Pittsburgh City Council. Councilman Anthony Cockhill presents Bill 481, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Works to Enter Into a Temporary Right-of-Entry License and Transfer Agreement Between the City of Pittsburgh and Rosalina George for the Purpose of Partially Removing a Retaining Wall and Erecting an Earthen Wall at the Rear Alongside the Homeowner's Property in Frick Park. Bill 482, Resolution Granting On To 1505 East Carson Street Their Successors and Asigns the Privilege and License to Construct, Maintain, and Use at Their Own Cost and Expense a New Projecting Sign at 1505 East Carson Street in the 19th Ward, 3rd Council District of the City of Pittsburgh. Bill 484, Ordinance Amending Title 4, Public Places and Property, Article 2, Telecommunications, Chapter 427, Telecommunication System in the Right-of-Way, Section 427.03, Definitions, and 427.11, Consideration for Row-Use Agreement to Provide for the Updated Definitions and Fee Structures for Wireless Small Cell Facilities. Bill 485, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Finance to Grant a Temporary Construction Easement to 2013 PA Brushton to Perform Land-Stabilizing Work. Councilman R. Daniel Vell presents Bill 483, Resolution Approving a Fee Schedule Presented by the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure for Use in the Cities Permitting in Agreements Involving Small Cell Facilities. Bill 486, Resolution Providing for Further Renewal by the Council of the City of Pittsburgh for a Declaration of Disaster Emergency Ratified by Council on March 17th, 2020, to Extend the Effectiveness of the Declaration for Seven Additional Days, Thereby Making the Declaration Effective July 7th in Response to the Ongoing Public Health Emergency Associated with the Spread of Coronavirus. Bill 487, Ordinance Amending and Supplementing the Pittsburgh Code Title 1, Administrative, Article 3, Organization, Chapter 116, Department of Public Safety, by Adding a New Section, Section 116.14, Chokehold Prohibition. Councilman Corey O'Connor presents Bill 488, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of Public Safety on Behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to Enter Into a Grant Agreement with the Pennsylvania Auto Theft Prevention Authority for the Purpose of Receiving Grant Funds in the Amount of $248,467 that would be used to Establish, Coordinate, and Fund Activities to Present, Prevent, Combat, and Reduce Auto Theft. Councilwoman Erica Strasberg presents Bill 489, Resolution Amending Resolution 570 of 2019, which Authorizes the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Finance to Enter Into a Maintenance Agreement with Opex Corporation for Maintenance Services Related to the Falcon Red Document Scanning Workstation by Exercising the Option to Extend the Term of the Agreement for One Year at a Cost Not to Exceed $10,540. Councilman Delby Wilson presents Bill 490, Ordinance Accepting New Street Name Lucky Lane in the 6th Ward of the City of Pittsburgh per the Recommendations by the City of Pittsburgh Addressing Committee. The Following Street Name was Approved by the Addressing Committee in May 2020. The Name Listed in this Ordinance shall be made official in accordance with the Pittsburgh Code Title 4, Public Places and Property, Chapter 420, Uniform Street Naming and Addressing. Bill 491, Ordinance Accepting New Street Name Hebo Drive in the 14th Ward of the City of Pittsburgh per the Recommendation by the City of Pittsburgh Addressing Committee. The Following Street Name was Approved by the Addressing Committee in May 2020. The Name Listed in this Ordinance shall be made official in accordance with the Pittsburgh Code Title 4, Public Places and Property, Chapter 420, Uniform Street Naming and Addressing. Bill 492, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Office of Management and Budget to Enter Into an Agreement or Agreements with Community-Based Organizations for Community and Economic Development for Planning Assistance in Various Neighborhoods in the City and Providing Operating Support for These Groups and to Provide the Payment at the Cost thereof not to exceed $500,000. Councilwoman Teresa Kell Smith presents Bill 454, Resolution Appointing Andrew Dash as the Director of the Department of City Planning of the City of Pittsburgh. Bill 455, Resolution Appointing Ms. Rakib Bay to Serve as a Member of the Shade Tree Commission for a Term to Expire May 1st, 2023. Ms. Bay will be serving in the Seat Previously Held by Ms. Molly Stephanie, whose Term had expired. Bill 456, Resolution Reappointing Mary Savage as a Member of the Shade Tree Commission for a Term to Expire May 1st, 2023. Bill 457, Resolution Appointing Demonte Walker to Service as Commissioner for the Gender Equity Commission for the City of Pittsburgh for a Term to Expire June 30th, 2023. Ms. Walker will be filling the Seat that has been vacant. Bill 458, Resolution Appointing Dr. Sharon Higginbotham to Serve as a Member of the Gender Equity Commission for a Term to Expire June 30th, 2023. Dr. Higginbotham will be serving in a Seat Previously Held by Dr. Chelsea Fletzino, who had resigned. Bill 459, Resolution Appointing Ms. Sarah Kinter to Serve as a Member of the Clean Pittsburgh Commission for a Term to Expire June 30th, 2024. Ms. Kinter will be serving in a Seat Designated for a Representative of the Department of Permiss License and Inspection. Bill 460, Resolution Appointing Ms. Erin Hobin to Serve as a Member of the Clean Pittsburgh Commission for a Term to Expire June 30th, 2024. Ms. Tobin will be serving in a Seat Designated for a Resident of the Pittsburgh's North Side. Bill 461, Resolution Appointing Mr. Jeff Scalacan to Serve as a Member of the Clean Pittsburgh Commission for a Term to Expire June 30th, 2024. Mr. Scalacan will be serving in a Seat Designated for a Representative of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure. Bill 462, Resolution Appointing Ms. Sarah Shay to Serve as a Member of the Clean Pittsburgh Commission for a Term to Expire June 30th, 2024. Ms. Shay will be serving in one of the Two Seats Designated for a Representative of the Pennsylvania Resource Council. Bill 460, Resolution Appointing Ms. Emily Poznak to Serve as a Member of the Clean Pittsburgh Commission for a Term to Expire June 30th, 2024. Ms. Poznak will be serving in one of the Two Seats Designated for Representative of the Pennsylvania Resource Council. Bill 464, Resolution Appointing Ms. Lee Wenzardo to Serve as a Commissioner for the Commission on Human Relations for a Term to Expire June 30th, 2024. Ms. Wenzardo will fill a Seat that has previously been vacant. Bill 465, Resolution Appointing Ms. Brittany Beasley to Serve as a Commissioner for the City of Pittsburgh on the Commission of Human Relations for a Term to Expire June 30th, 2024. Ms. Beasley will be filling a Seat that has been vacant. Bill 466, Resolution Appointing Mr. Alberto Benfles to Serve as a Commissioner for the Commission on Human Relations for a Term to Expire June 30th, 2024. Mr. Benfles will fill a Seat that has been previously vacant. Bill 467, Resolution Appointing Ms. Betsy Magley to Serve as a Commissioner for the Equal Opportunity Review Commission for a Term to Expire June 30th, 2024. Ms. Magley will fill a Seat that has been previously vacant. Bill 468, Resolution Reappointing Mr. James Myers as a Commissioner for the Equal Opportunity Review Commission for a Term to Expire May 31st, 2024. Bill 469, Resolution Reappointing Ms. Erin Conley as a Commissioner of the Equal Opportunity Review Commission for a Term to Expire May 31st, 2024. Bill 470, Resolution Appointing Ms. Razee Poole to Serve as a Member of the Ethics Hearing Board for a Term to Expire June 30th, 2023. Ms. Poole will fill a Seat that has been previously held by Mr. Khalif Ali. Bill 471, Resolution Appointing Ms. Rhonda Neff to Serve as a Commissioner for the Ethics Commission for a Term to Expire June 30th, 2023. Ms... Bill 472, Resolution Reappointing Ms. Sharon Tharp Gilman to Serve as a Member of the Board of Directors of the Allegheny County Sanitary Authority, ALCA-SAN, for a Term to Expire January 1st, 2025. Bill 473, Resolution Appointing Tammy Thompson to Serve as a Member of the Housing Authority for the City of Pittsburgh Board of Directors for a Term to Expire March 26th, 2025. Ms. Thompson will replace Eden Miller, whose Term has expired. Bill 474, Resolution Appointing Mr. Majestic Lane to Serve as a Member of the Board of Directors of the Housing Authority of the City of Pittsburgh for a Term to Expire March 26th, 2025. Mr. Lane will be replacing Mr. Kaplan, whose Term expired. Bill 475, Resolution Reappointing Ms. Janet Evans as a Member of the Board of Directors for the Housing Authority of the City of Pittsburgh for a Term to Expire September 30th, 2024. Bill 476, Resolution Appointing Ms. Liz Fishback to Serve as a Member of the Board of Directors of the Pittsburgh Parking Authority for a Term to Expire April 30th, 2024. Ms. Fishback will be replacing Ms. Catherine Quershi, whose Term has expired. Bill 477, Resolution Informing City Council of the Appointment of Erica Strasberg as a Member of the Board of Trustees of the Carnegie Library of Pittsburgh for a Term to Expire June 30th, 2023. Bill 478, Resolution Informing City Council of the Reappointment of Scott Bricker as a Commissioner of the Southwestern Pennsylvania Commission for a Term to Expire December 31st, 2023. Bill 479, Resolution Informing City Council of the Reappointment of Ms. Mavis Rainey as a Commissioner of the Southwestern Pennsylvania Commission for a Term to Expire December 31st, 2023. Bill 480, Resolution Informing City Council of the Reappointment of Dr. Aurora Charard as a Commissioner of the Southwestern Pennsylvania Commission for a Term to Expire December 31st, 2023. Bill 493, Communication from Kevin Paulus, Director of the Office of Management and Budget, Submitting Acting Pay Approvals on Behalf of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure for Michael McCaw for the Acting Pay Policy Revised in June 2018. This concludes the reading for today, Tuesday, February 18th, 2020. Thank you and have a wonderful day.
Good morning and welcome to this regular meeting of City Council for Tuesday, June 30th, 2020. Council will have a meeting announcement. Council will continue to meet virtually on Tuesdays and on Wednesdays until further notice. All meetings will be livestreamed on the City Channel's YouTube channel. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess. Mr. Cockhill.
Here.
Ms. Gross.
Here.
Crowe.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle.
Here.
Mr. Connor.
Ms. Strasberger.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
Here.
Eight Members Present.
Thank you. I just want to make note to the public that Councilman Connors having technical difficulties, but is trying to join us. As we join together from our remote locations, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our next order of business is proclamations. We have no proclamations to be presented. And so that moves us on to the next order of business, which is public comment. Our first speaker is Beth Rupert. Beth Rupert?
Yes, hello, Councilwoman.
Hello.
Hi.
Please state your neighborhood.
Beth Rupert from Lawrenceville.
Thank you.
Hello, Councilmembers. Thank you for listening to me. I own 186 Home Street.
Beth, you have two devices on. You need to turn one of those off.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Please go ahead. You have three minutes.
Okay, I think I did it. I'm sorry. Please, my name is Beth Rupert. I own 186 Home Street. Please vote now and vote no for the nomination. This nomination would mean that you are honoring a corrupt cop, a slave owner who violated African-Americans and women. The nomination would mean that the house would sit until it falls down and may damage other property or kill someone. Our insurance will not cover this loss and the city will be responsible. The nomination would violate our 15th and 14th Amendment rights without just compensation. The nomination would devastate our families, finance, but our home and business. And we have three children. The nomination would take away our father's dying wish and violate inheritance laws. The nomination would give Lawrenceville stakeholders a way to get our home through the blight law and still law-abiding good Americans' homes. We can prove everything that we're going to testify today and we welcome to meet with council to show this proof. There are many things that have been stated that are false and we would like to think that you would have to make an informed decision since it takes away our family's home, a home that we inherited from our beloved father, George Rupert, four years ago, who wanted his family to receive the benefits of his estate, a house that he worked hard on all his life, a house that he paid taxes on for over 40 years. We want you to know that this has been devastating on our family as it has caused significant emotional and financial strains. George, in his 80s, died of cancer and has significant medical bills and other bills that the estate is responsible for. He had no money and maintaining this monstrous house that is uninhabitable and falling is financially overwhelming. We will be falling for financial hardship as well as bankruptcy and we may even lose our own home as well for late savings because of this nomination. Today I'd like to touch on several factors. The house was nominated first and foremost on Samuel E. Walt's contributions as stated in the historical nomination or recommendation. This is an insult to not only myself as a human being, but as a teacher and a member of Black Lives Matter. Samuel E. Walt was a racist corrupt cop. He not only continued to own slaves after the abolition of slavery, but increased his own number of slaves as testified in the Free at Last information that we sent you in evidence. Instead of doing the morally incorrect thing and following the law that as sheriff, he vowed to uphold, he refused for years to set his slaves free and he continued to propagate slavery. He was also known and had a brothel and was fined for abusing women. These are facts. This man should not be revered by nominating a house in his name. Lawrenceville stakeholders never brought up this matter in the historical committee and the historical committee never fact-checked any of this. By nominating this house, you will be honoring Samuel E. Walt, a corrupt cop who abused African-Americans and...
We have our next speaker, but I want to acknowledge that Councilman Connor has joined us by phone as well. We have nine members. Next speaker, Eric Rupert. Next speaker, Eric Rupert. Mr. Rupert, if you're there, you got to turn your mic on.
Okay, can you hear him now?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. I apologize for that.
Please state your name and neighborhood for the record.
My name is Eric Rupert.
Thank you. And you have three minutes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Hello. Thank you again, City Council, for listening with me today. My name is Eric Rupert and I own the home at 186 Home Street. I would like to address the structural status of my father's house. I am a mason contractor and I've been in the business for over 30 years. When my father died in 2016, the house was habitable, but needed a good deal of work. There was still knob and tube wiring and asbestos in the house. The roof needed reshingled, but nothing that couldn't be rehabbed. In August of 2019, the house was hit by a wind burst. The same wind burst took down a brick structure, Jimmy Ginger's, only a block away. When our insurance company came in to assess, they recommended a structural engineer come in. Since the wind burst not only blew away a good section of shingles, but it cracked and weakened the roof joists, which were already in bad condition. We immediately had a structural engineer inspect the house, who recommended the house be demolished. I put in roof braces to temporarily safeguard the roof until the house can be demolished. We immediately filed for demolition in October of 2019, two months before the house was nominated. In fact, we were approved for the demolition in the beginning of November and the house was scheduled to be demolished in the first week of December. Then we received a notice that the demolition approval was being rescinded due to the house being nominated. This notice is dated November 27th, 2019, and the house was not nominated until December 3rd at 10:00 a.m. My wife had been in constant contact with Sarah Quinn, who continually, prior to and up to December 3rd, was told that there was not a nomination on the house. We do have emails to prove this. On December 3rd, Beth, my wife, physically went down to pick up the demolition permit since we needed it for the demolition and miraculously, the house was nominated at 10:00 a.m. You have the Director of the Historical Committee, who approves the nominations, state that there is no nomination and government forms with erroneous information on it. The house should have been demolished per the law. Dave Green, who sits on the Historical Committee, sent us notices that he was denying our request and that we had to tear off the roof and replace it. This makes no sense in the fact that the house repairs far exceed the house's worth. We have financial impact statements proving that the house makes no financial sense to rehab it as well as the structural engineer's report that validates this. In addition, we have been denied by our bank for loans, so we have no way of repairing this house. Why would we? And why would you? We had the structural...
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Gary Kelmeyer. Gary?
Hello, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
I will start. I am Gary Kelmeyer, Attorney for the Owners Eric and Beth Rupert. Members of council, thank you again for the opportunity to speak against the designation of 186 Home Street as an historic structure. Please do not approve this designation for two distinct reasons. First and foremost, as you've heard, Samuel E. Walt, or E. Wart, as he's sometimes called by the Historic Commission because he's so unknown, was a slave owner. The University of Pittsburgh publication, Free at Last Slavery in Pittsburgh in the 18th and 19th Centuries, confirms that E. Walt was not only a slaveholder, but he increased his slaves in Pennsylvania even though the Quakers had already passed the Act for the Gradual Abolition of Slavery. This is confirmed in the census of 1810 and in the Supreme Court case of Barkley as well. The proponents claim that E. Walt or E. Wart was a founder of the University of Pittsburgh. That's false. He rented the actual founders' land he had taken and stolen from the Native Americans near the point after they had lived there for centuries. He then squeezed so much rent from them that the founders had to move the location of the university to a remote area called Oakland. Now, the Planning Commission says the owner's history is irrelevant in a designation of an historic structure. That is completely false. The Pittsburgh's own ordinance states at Section 1104.04b2 that these considerations are expressly to be required and considered. Mr. Mayor and Council, as protests spread against symbols of systemic racism and they are being torn down globally, we cannot send a message to the world that Pittsburgh is a, quote, "safe haven city," unquote, only if you are white. Now, the second consideration you should take into account is what we might call technical. Number one, there have been extreme alterations both inside and out to this building. It is no longer, it no longer has the integrity of a structure like this. The home is dilapidated and dangerous, as Eric has told you in detail. There are many other examples of sound Greek revival in the area, even one by Mr. Cochran, the proponent of this structure. I don't understand why he has to have our structure taken as well. And I also note that he did not appear or give input to the June 9th hearing on this. Perhaps he has withdrawn or should be considered to have withdrawn his nomination. Also, there's the mention that this taking would be done without just compensation if this is approved and the property's going to sit there wasted. It just doesn't make any sense.
I'm remembering July 7th.
I have June 9th as the date of the last meeting. Hello? Finally, I'd note that a respected developer is ready to take the building over and produce residences that'll comply with this neighborhood. This seems to me the heart of a planning commission decision. It should have been their decision. It's not going to be some modern...
Thank you. The next speaker is Jay Yoder. Jay?
Yes, hello. It's Jay Yoder. I'm from Morningside. You might remember me from shouting quite passionately recently at a City Council meeting about having been arrested by SWAT, eaten a face full of pepper spray, been teargassed, and I'm now a named plaintiff in the lawsuit against the city for excessive use of force by the police, for lies told by the mayor about that use of force. So I'm just back, a shouty white queer, to say some similar things to last time, like, why is the dentist group still under consideration? I am an international human rights observer. I worked for Christian peacemaker teams. I was the Director of Communications and Engagement there and I have done international human rights observation in Iraqi Kurdistan, in Colombia, alongside First Nations people in Canada and alongside black folks here in the U.S., where our police in Pittsburgh are acting as basically an occupying force. We've known this for a long time, but they showed themselves on national television now to be that occupying force. I watched them advance on my neighbors as if they were using urban warfare tactics. I recognize the tactics once again because I have witnessed occupying forces in other nations and this looked exactly the same. I'm not sure why we are asking to consult with a military consulting group. In my day job, I work as an anti-violence advocate who advises churches and Christian institutions on how to select third-party consultants. You can recognize a third-party consultant who has the interest of people at heart versus a third-party consultant who is there to protect the institution that it is consulting with. Dentist Group is very clearly a military consulting group. They advise on the best use of force. Please... Please, in the middle of a national moment, when we are considering making police forces less militarized, do not consult with a military consulting group that tells people how to use the use of force, use of, quote, "less lethal force more effectively." I do not understand how Pittsburgh is not taking this opportunity to spend less money on boys and their toys. I see more earmarked money in this for more toys for the police. We need to be turning in the complete opposite direction. And I'm disappointed in who has brought this forward as a member of the queer community. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other speakers, we'll move on to our next order of business, which is the presentation of papers. And I just want to remind members that we have Bill 403 from the Dentist Group, which comes to us with a negative recommendation. We have Cover Your Asset. We have the Lawrenceville House for Historic Designation, and 26 appointments. So it's going to be an agenda that we need to really pay attention to, including myself. So I just want to make sure to be aware of all the votes that are important here. With that said, we'll have Councilman Burgess, Chair of Urban Recreation.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Works.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 481, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Works to enter into a temporary right-of-entry license and transfer agreement between the city and Rosalia George for the purpose of partially removing a retaining wall and erecting an earthen wall at the rear and alongside the homeowner's property and in Frick Park. Bill Number 482, Resolution Granting Under 1505 East Carson Street LP, Their Successors and Assign the Privilege and License to Construct Maintaining Use of Their Own Cost and Expense and New Projecting Sign at 1505 East Carson Street in the 19th Ward, 3rd Council District. Bill Number 484, Ordinance Amending Title for Public Places and Property, Article 2, Cellular Communications, Chapter 427, Cellular Communication Systems in the Right-of-Way, Section 42703, Definitions in 42711, Consideration for Right-of-Way Use Agreement to Provide for Updated Definitions in Free Structures, Fee Structures, for While as Small Sale Facilities. Bill Number 485, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Finance to Grant a Temporary Construction Easement to 2013 Pennsylvania Brushton LLC to Perform Land Stabilizing Work.
Councilman, you have a motion to waive or wait on Bill 485, correct?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to waive or wait on Bill 485, please.
Motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The bill will appear on tomorrow's Standing Committee agenda. Thank you. Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Intergovernmental Affairs.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Good morning. Councilman Kraus, Chair of Human Resources.
Good morning, Madam President. I'm having problems here. How are you today? I have no new papers, but if I may take this opportunity to make a technical amendment to Bill 482 under Councilman Coghill's committee. It asks for the projecting sign at 1505 East Carson Street in the 19th Ward. It is the 17th Ward.
Yeah, and I want to also add, Madam Clerk, you had mentioned it was the Council District 2, but I think it's, or 3.
It's 3.
It's 3, okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Anthony. I didn't mean to overspeak. It does say 3 in here, but the ward does need to be changed to the 17th Ward, please. But beyond that, madam president, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. And now we have Councilman LaBelle, Chair of Finance and Law.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman LaBelle presents Bill Number 483, Resolution Approving a Fee Schedule Presented by the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure for Use in the City's Permitting and Agreements Involving Small Sale Facilities. Bill Number 486, Resolution Providing for Further Renewal by the Council of the City of a Declaration of Disaster Emergency Ratified by Council on March 17, 2020, to Extend the Effectiveness of the Declaration for Seven Additional Days, thereby making the Declaration Effective until July 7 in Response to the Ongoing Public Health Emergency Associated with the Spread of Coronavirus. Bill Number 487, Ordinance Amending and Supplement in the Pittsburgh Code Title 1 Administrative Article 3 Organization, Chapter 116, Department of Public Safety, by Adding a New Section, Section 11614, Cho Call for Addition.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman.
Motion to waive the rules of council so Bill 486 can appear in the final action today.
Thank you. Oh, in favor? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Will appear on tomorrow's Standing Committee. Today's meeting. Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Conner, Chair of Public Safety Services. Councilman Conner's by phone. I don't know if he can hear us.
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill Number 488, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of Public Safety on behalf of the city to Enter into a Grant Agreement with the Pennsylvania Auto Theft Prevention Authority for the Purpose of Receiving Grant Funds in the Amount of $248,476 that will be used to Establish Coordinate and Fund Activities to Prevent, Combat, and Reduce Auto Theft.
Thank you. Now, Madam Clerk, do we introduce his bill for Cover Your Assets during this part or during final action?
We can bring it up under your motions and resolutions and the final.
Okay, everything.
Motion, motions and resolutions.
Okay, just want to make sure. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, and then we have Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Good morning, Councilwoman.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Strasburger presents Bill Number 489, Resolution Amending Resolution 570, which Authorizes the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Finance to Enter into a Maintenance Agreement with OPEC Corporation for Maintenance Services Related to the Falcon Red Document Scanning workstation by exercising the option to extend the terms of the agreement for one year at a cost not to exceed $10,540. Bill Number 494, Resolution Amending and Supplementing Resolution 539, which Authorizes the Mayor, City Clerk, and Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to Enter into a Contract with Granicus Inc. for Software Upgrades, Server Hosting Services, and Annual Maintenance of Ledger Star Agenda Management and Video Streaming, in order to Extend the Contract an additional 12 months for a Total Cost of $247,722.22.
Thank you, and we have Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development. Good morning.
There's a waiver of the rules.
For which one?
I'm sorry, Madam President. There's a waiver of the rules for Bill 494 under Councilwoman Strasburger's committee.
I don't have that. Thank you.
Thank you for catching that, Councilman. Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to waive the rules of council for Bill 494 so that it appears on tomorrow's agenda.
494. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I just, since I don't have it here, could you tell me what it is?
That's the one that we just read in reference to the extension of the Granicus for our software hosting.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. And, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 On tomorrow's Standing Committee agenda. Thank you. I do want to say the folks did a great job. If you see all these yellow lines on my paper.
Madam President.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I'm just presenting my.
Thank you, thank you.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 490, Ordinance Accepting a New Street Name, Lucky Lane, in the 6th Ward of the city as per recommendation by the City of Pittsburgh Addressing Committee. The following street name was approved by CPAC in May 2020. The name listed in this ordinance shall be made official in accordance with the Pittsburgh Code Title for Public Places and Property, Chapter 420, Uniform Street Naming and Addressing. Bill Number 491, Ordinance Accepting a New Street Name, Skid Row Drive, in the 14th Ward of the city as per recommendation by the City of Pittsburgh Addressing Committee. The following street name was approved by CPAC in May 2020. The name listed in this ordinance shall be made official in accordance with the Pittsburgh Code Title for Public Places and Property, Chapter 420, Uniform Street Naming and Addressing. Bill Number 492, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Office of Management and Budget to Enter into an Agreement with Community-Based Organization for Community and Economic Development for Planning Assistance in Various Neighborhoods in the City and Providing Operating Support for These Group and Provide for the Payment at a Cost Not to Exceed $500,000.
Thank you, and myself, Chair of Hearings. We have 26 appointments and one acting pay. Let's do the appointments first.
Council President Kill Smith presents Bill Number 454, Resolution Appointing Andrew Dash as Director of the Department of City Planning for the city. Bill Number 455, Resolution Appointing Ms. Joaquin Bay to Serve as a Member of the Shade Tree Commission for a Term to Expire, May 1, 2023. Ms. Bay will be serving in a seat previously held by Molly Stephanie, whose term has expired. Bill Number 456, Resolution Appointing Ms. Mary Savage as a Member of the Shade Tree Commission for a Term to Expire, May 1, 2023. Bill Number 457, Resolution Appointing Ms. Diamante Walker to Serve as a Commission for the Gender Equity Commission of the city for a Term to Expire, June 30, 2023. Ms. Walker will be filling in a seat that has been vacant. Bill Number 458, Resolution Appointing Dr. Sharon Higginbotham to Serve as a Member of the Gender Equity Commission for a Term to Expire, June 30, 2023. Dr. Higginbotham will be serving in a seat previously held by Chelsea Palatino, who has resigned. Bill Number 459, Resolution Appointing Ms. Sarah Kinter to Serve as a Member of the Clean Pittsburgh Commission for a Term to Expire, June 30, 2020. Ms. Kinter will be serving in a seat designated for Representative of the Department of Permits, Licenses, and Inspections. Bill Number 460, Resolution Appointing Ms. Erin Tobin to Serve as a Member of the Clean Pittsburgh Commission for a Term to Expire, June 30, 2024. Ms. Tobin will be serving in a seat designated for a Resident of Pittsburgh's North Side. Bill Number 461, Resolution Appointing Mr. Jeff Skellican to Serve as a Member of the Clean Pittsburgh Commission for a Term to Expire, June 30, 2024. Mr. Skellican will be serving in a seat designated for a Representative of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure. Bill Number 462, Resolution Appointing Ms. Sarah Shay to Serve as a Member of the Clean Pittsburgh Commission for a Term to Expire, June 30, 2024. Ms. Shay will be serving in one of two seats designated for a Representative of the Pennsylvania Resources Council. Bill Number 463, Resolution Appointing Mrs. Emily Potosinski to Serve as a Member of the Clean Pittsburgh Commission for a Term to Expire, June 30, 2024. Ms. Potosinski will be serving in one of two seats designated for a Representative of the Pennsylvania Resources Council. Bill Number 464, Resolution Appointing Ms. Leah Liza Rondo to Serve as a Commission for the Commission on Human Relations for a Term to Expire, June 30, 2024. Mr. Liza Rondo will fill a seat that has been vacant. Bill Number 465, Resolution Appointing Ms. Brittany Beasley to Serve as a Commission for the City of Pittsburgh Commission on Human Relations for a Term to Expire, June 30, 2024. Ms. Beasley will be filling a seat that has been vacant. Bill Number 466, Resolution Appointing Mr. Alberto Benziquin to Serve as a Commission for the Commission on Human Relations for a Term to Expire, June 30, 2024. Mr. Benziquin will fill a seat that has been vacant. Bill Number 467, Resolution Appointing Ms. Betsy Magley to Serve as a Commission for the Equal Opportunity Review Commission for a Term to Expire, June 30, 2024. Ms. Magley will fill a seat that had been vacant. Bill Number 468, Resolution Appointing Mr. James Myers Jr. as a Commission for the Equal Opportunity Review Commission for a Term to Expire, May 31, 2024. Bill Number 469, Resolution Appointing Ms. Erin Conley as a Commission for the Equal Opportunity Review Commission for a Term to Expire, May 31, 2024. Resolution Appointing Ms. Graceite Poole to Serve as a Member of the Ethics Hearing Board for a Term to Expire, June 30, 2023. Ms. Poole will fill a seat that had been previously held by Mr. Khalif Ali, whose term has expired. Bill Number 471, Resolution Appointing Mrs. Rhonda Neff to Serve as a Commission for the Ethics Commission for a Term to Expire, June 30, 2023. Ms. Neff will be filling a seat that had been previously held by Mr. Greg Monaco. Bill Number 472, Resolution Appointing Ms. Shania Tarp Gillum to Serve as a Member of the Board of Directors for the Allegheny County Sanitary Authority for a Term to Expire, January 1, 2025. Bill Number 473, Resolution Appointing Ms. Tammy Thompson to Serve as a Member of the Housing Authority of the City Board of Directors for a Term to Expire, March 26, 2025. Ms. Thompson will be replacing Ms. Edith Miller, whose term has expired. Bill Number 474, Resolution Appointing Mr. Majestic Lane to Serve as a Member of the Board of Directors for the Housing Authority of the city for a Term to Expire, March 26, 2025. Mr. Lane will be replacing Mr. Peter Kaplan, whose term has expired. Bill Number 475, Resolution Appointing Ms. Janet Evans as a Member of the Board of Directors for the Housing Authority of the city for a Term to Expire, September 30, 2024. Bill Number 476, Resolution Appointing Ms. Liz Fishback to Serve as a Member of the Board of Directors for the Pittsburgh Park and Authority for a Term to Expire, April 30, 2024. Ms. Fishback will be replacing Mrs. Catherine Quishy, whose term has expired. Bill Number 477, Resolution Informing City Council of the Appointment of Councilperson Erica Strasburger as a Member of the Board of Trustees of the Carnegie Library of Pittsburgh for a Term to Expire, June 30, 2023. Bill Number 478, Resolution Informing City Council of the Reappointment of Mr. Scott Bricker as a Commission for the Southwestern Pennsylvania Commission for a Term to Expire, December 31, 2023. Bill Number 479, Resolution Informing City Council, the Reappointment of Mrs. Mavis Rainey as a Commission of the Southwestern Pennsylvania Commission for a Term to Expire, December 31, 2023. Bill Number 48, Resolution Informing City Council of the Reappointment of Dr. Aurora Sherrod as a Commission for the Southwestern Pennsylvania Commission for a Term to Expire, December 31, 2023. And Bill Number 493, Communication from Kevin Paulus, Director of the Office of Management and Budget, Submitting an Acting Pay Approval on behalf of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure, and Michael Maylock, Per the Acting Pay Policy Revised in June 2018.
Madam President.
Yes.
May we please take the motions, bill by bill?
Sure.
Okay, may I?
Yes.
Motion on Bill 454 to hold for interview.
Let me see. We have a motion. We have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
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 President on Bill 455456, on the appointments to the Shade Tree Commission, motion to approve.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, so they're approved?
On Bills 457, 458, appointments to the Gender Equity Commission, I'd like to motion to hold for interview.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We'll work with you to schedule the interviews.
Thank you very much, even though the Deputy Director of the. Even though, uh, the Deputy Director of the U R A, uh, Diamante is one of those. I think it would be really interesting to still hear from them. Um, on the bills for the Clean Pittsburgh Commission, four five nine, four six oh, four six one, four six two, four six three. I'd like to motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approved.
Thank you, Madam President. On the Bills, uh, appointing Commissioners to the Human Relation Commission, four six four, four six five, four six six. Uh, I'd like to motion to hold for interview.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? Oh, in favor?
Aye. Then, Madam President, if I may, I'd like to the, the, um, appointments to our Equal Opportunity Review Commission, four six seven, four six eight, and four six nine, I'd like to motion to hold for interview, please.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second, but discussion, just so you're aware, four six eight is a reappointment, just so you know. Great, then let's, thank you, Councilman. Let's, uh, let us please hold four six six, four six seven for interview and approve four six eight for reappointment.
Okay, so most of the-
What about four six nine? Four six nine was mentioned as well. That's a reappointment as well.
That's Ethics Hearing. That's different.
No, four six nine is Equal Opportunity Review Commission.
Oh, I'm sorry, you are absolutely right. So forgive me, let's go back. Uh, for the appointments to Equal Opportunity Review Commission, which is four six seven, four six seven would be held for interview, four six eight and four six nine would be approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's your two separate motion.
Pardon me?
Those are two separate motions.
Yes, so let's do the one for the, um, hold for interview.
Okay, four seven, motion to hold for interview, please.
Do we motion, we have a second? I want any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hold for tomorrow, we'll hold for interviews, okay?
Thank you very much, thank you very much. Uh, four six eight, four six nine, motion, uh, to approve.
Second.
Do we have a second? Any discussion? So, oh, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions, we'll hold for, okay?
Thank you, Madam President. Four seven oh and four seven one are appointments to the Ethics Hearing Board. I'd like to motion to hold for interview, please.
Second.
Motion second, uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hold for interview, thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, four seven two is a reappointment to Alkasan. I'd like to motion to approve, please.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Um, any discussion? I'd just like to know if, uh, if they're a resident, that's all. But, um, I'll talk to Councilman O'Connor, it's no big deal.
Thank you, Madam President.
Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Approved, go ahead, I'm sorry, Councilman.
No, 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 thank you for doing this because I was quite overwhelmed by the reading of these.
It's hard to read on my screen here, let me just tell you.
And they're, and they're so important. Uh, the next, we have appointments to the Housing Authority in Bill four seven three, four seven four, uh, four seven five. I'd like to motion to approve, please.
Second.
Do we have a second? Any discussion? Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions, approved, Councilman Kraus?
Uh, four seven six is a motion appointing Ms. Fishback to the Parking Authority to replace Kathy Koreshi. I would like to motion to approve, please.
Second.
Um, we have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? To be honest with you, I'd like to, uh, hold for an interview, but because this is so difficult doing this way, I'm gonna go and find out my questions, so.
I'd be happy to hold if you want, Madam President.
I'm good, I'm good.
Okay.
The less meetings like this, the better.
Okay, all in favor?
Favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Uh, next, Madam President, is the appointment, yay, of Councilwoman, uh, Strasburger to be a member of the Board of the Trustees of the Carnegie Library. Is four seven seven, I would very happily like to motion to approve.
But, uh, motion to approve, second. Any discussion? I'll just say, Councilwoman, um, people were, are requesting you to serve on their board, so thank you for doing this because this is just one more for you. So, um, that's all I'll say. Um, oh, in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, motion is approved.
And then finally, I'm sorry, Madam President. Uh, and then finally are the appointments or reappointments to the Southwestern Pennsylvania Commission. Those are Bills four seven eight, four seven nine, and four eight oh. I would like to motion to approve, please.
Second.
Motion second, um. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? It's approved, thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Madam President. And then finally on Bill four ninety-three is, uh, a motion is to read, receive, and file, please.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Oh, in favor, any discussion? Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, we're done with those, right?
Thank you, thank you, Madam President, I appreciate your, your help.
No, thank you, I'm trying to keep up with you on my little screen here, it's kind of hard, but, um, now we'll move on to unfinished business. Uh, did we do the acting pay for dummy?
Yes.
Yes, we did.
Do we have, um, we now will move on to unfinished business. We have a motion to, uh, approve Bill twenty twenty-four two five for an appointment for Sarah Kinter as Director of the Department of Permits, Licenses, and Inspection. The interview was last Wednesday, June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty. Any discussion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Let me re, let me read it.
Go ahead.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Clerk.
Bill four twenty-five, Council President, uh, presents Bill four twenty-five, Resolution appointing Sarah Kinter as the Director of the Department of Permits, Licenses, and Inspections for the city.
Motion to approve.
Second.
And the interview was held last Wednesday, June twenty-fourth. Um, any just, we have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? And I'll just, I'm just gonna say that I'm looking forward to working with the Director and congratulate her. Um, and I will point out that this is a female Director, um, in the city, so I think that that's, that's also great. But I will say that there are a lot of problems there. We're still hearing a lot of questions about, between city planning and P L and I and D P W, not even so much D P W, but some of the concerns with permits. And I think that we are going to watch very closely. We have to watch very closely to make sure that these issues get resolved. And if not, um, then I think we're going to have to have some conversations about what we do with that department because it should not take months to get permits for polls. It should not take months to get permits for development. Um, it, there, there's just so many things and, and additional cost with every fee and every, another fee, another permit. I just feel like we need to get a handle on what's going on there. Um, there's, but there is a lot of new development happening in the city, and I think that's part of what's going on. But, um, waiting for people to come out and, um, to look, and waiting for inspectors to come out and to look at, uh, some of the work being done, especially in the electrical departments, what I'm hearing. There's, uh, I think it's just a struggle because there's not that many, but then we need to figure something different out. It just shouldn't take this long. So I just want to say that I'm looking forward to working with them and looking forward to addressing those issues for the public as well. Okay, um, oh, oh, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So, the Director is approved and congratulations, Director. We're looking forward to working with you. Any other unfinished business from members? Seeing that, we'll now move on to committee for, uh, reports to committee for final action. And we have Councilwoman LeVale, Committee on Finance and Law.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilwoman LeVale presents Bill number four forty-nine. Report of the Committee on Finance and Law for June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number four oh seven. Resolution authorizing and directing the City Controller to transfer a total of twenty-five thousand dollars from into the following accounts within the twenty-twenty operating budget. Bill number four twenty-one. Resolution authorizing the city to enter into an agreement with Point Park University to allow students under teacher supervision to provide creative and strategic services on a volunteer basis to the city on an ongoing project-specific basis such as for marketing and for twenty-twenty census outreach. Bill number four twenty-two. Resolution authorizing the issuing of a warrant in favor of Littler Medelsen in an amount not to exceed ten thousand one hundred twelve dollars and five cents for professional legal services regarding unemployment matter.
You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing that, the bills are now ready for final passage. Those in favor will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no, the clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
No on four oh seven, aye on all others.
Ms. Gross.
I am voting, uh, we have both, um, the Densus Group ones or just the financial transaction here? You'll have to help me, Madam Clerk. I see four oh seven, which is the dollars front to CPRB.
Right, this is just a transaction.
This is not, yeah, this is just a transaction. This is not the Densus Group.
Okay, dokie, so I on all bills, thank you very much.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. LeVale.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor. Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
This is Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
On Bills four oh seven, we have, I, we have I seven, one, no on all other bills, I's eight, no zero.
Um, the bills haven't received legally required number of votes are finally passed. And now we'll move on to Councilman O'Connor, now this is the bill that has several bills that we have to pay attention to. Councilman O'Connor, um.
He's, he is on, uh, but he's, he's having some issues with getting unmuted. So he's on his cell phone, oh, sounds, look like he's unmuted now. Councilman O'Connor. Uh, he's still maybe having technical problems. So Councilman O'Connor presents Bill number four fifty. Report of the Committee on Public Safety Services for June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty with a negative recommendation. Bill number four oh three. Resolution authorizing the mayor and executive director of the Citizen Police Review Board to enter into an agreement with the Densus Group to provide Citizens Police Review Board with a third-party assessment of an effective plan to address police citizen engagement and use of force as it is currently deployed and providing for a payment of the cost thereof in an amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars. Bill, Bill number four fifty-one.
No, four fifty-one is a report.
Right, did you want to take that one separately, Council President? I think you probably want to take that one first before we go.
Okay, yes.
And this is before it's with a negative recommendation, so your yes will be for the no.
So this is for Bill
four oh three.
Four oh three, okay. So on Bill four oh three, this is the one that includes the Densus Group, correct?
Yes.
So we need to vote no, wait, no, if we want to uphold the recommendation, correct?
You're voting yes to, you're voting yes for the negative recommendation. So if you're supporting the negative recommendation, you would vote yes.
Okay, all right, that's what makes sure everybody's clear. Thank you, myself included. So thank you, can we, um, any discussion on the bills?
Madam.
Okay, um, the bill's now ready for final action, oh, in favor?
We're gonna do a roll call vote.
Yeah, can we do a roll call vote?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Hi.
Mr. Kraus.
Uh, no.
Mr. LeVale.
No.
Mr. O'Connor. Ms. Strasburger.
Hi.
Mr. Wilson.
No.
This is Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
I five, three no's, Bill tells.
Okay. The bill having failed to receive the legally required number of votes is defeated. And now we'll go, we'll move on to the other bills, Council, the report.
Yes. Councilwoman LeVale presents Bill number four fifty-one. Report of the Committee on Public Safety Services for June twenty-fourth with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number four twenty-four. Resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Public Safety to enter on behalf of the city into a professional services agreement with Smith detections or upgrades to two Sable five thousand detection devices in an amount not to exceed ten thousand two hundred and eighty dollars.
Looks like you're reading the title of the bills, is there any discussion on the bills? Hearing none, the bill's now ready for final action. Those in favor the passage will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no, the clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Hi.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. LeVale.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor. Ms. Strasburger.
Hi.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
This is Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
Aye, eight, no zero.
The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes, is finally passed. Councilman Anthony Cockhill, Committee on Public Works.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Cockhill presents Bill number 452, Report of the Committee on Public Works for June 24, 2020, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number 416, Resolution Authorizing the Director of the Department of Finance on Behalf of the City to Enter Into a Temporary Construction Easement in Louvre Imminent Domain with the Owners of Certain Property in the 18th Ward of the City, known as 318 Arlington Avenue and 320 Arlington Avenue, for Landslide Remediation Work Related to Public Roadway Purposes. Bill number 417, Resolution Vacating a Portion of Wool Slayer Way, Beginning at a Point on the Northerly Right-of-Way of Wood Slayer to its Westernly Terminus in the 6th Ward, 7th Council District.
You've heard the reading of the title of bills, is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are now ready for final action, those in favor will vote aye when their name is called, those opposed will vote no, the clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Cockhill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. LaVell.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor. Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
This is Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
Aye, seven, no zero.
The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes, are finally passed.
Madam President?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I think I was muted on that.
You were muted.
I wish to register my vote. Councilman O'Connor and I are texting back and forth, he is on, his audio's not recording, he wishes to cast his votes, but we can't hear.
On Bill 416 and 417 will be ayes, nine, no, zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and the bills haven't received the legally required number of votes, are finally passed. Now we'll move on to Councilwoman Deb Gross, on Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs.
Madam President.
Thank you, good morning.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill number 453, Report of the Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs for June 24, 2020, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number 418, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Fuel Facilities Plan for the CMU 5th and Clyde Resident Hall and Campus 4735 Fifth Avenue. Bill number 419, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Fuel Facilities Plan for the CMU Ford's and dealer Residence Hall 587 Fourth Avenue.
It's not usual, they used to do it with the newspaper all the time.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of the bills, is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing that, bills are now ready for final action, those in favor will vote aye when their name is called, those opposed will vote no. The clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Cockhill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. LaVell.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor. Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
This is Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus, is Mr. O'Connor voting aye on this bill as well?
I think we're going to have to take his vote separately at the end, I don't know.
Hello, can anybody hear me?
No.
Yes, I hear you, Councilman, it's on, yes.
Okay, I've been, I've been on this whole meeting, so I don't know what's wrong, I've asked for my cell phone to go through, so were any of my votes recorded? Or do I have to go back and vote each bill again?
Just two votes.
We have some, we have some registered, Councilman, but we do need to get some additional votes.
Okay, I mean, I think I'm an aye on all bills, except the CBRB, I voted no on that bill, so aye on the bills that I missed.
And how about the, is that the one with the dentist group, okay.
Yes.
All right, thank you, thank you, Councilman.
Okay, all right, thank you.
On Bill 418, we have ayes, nine, no, zero.
Thank you, the bills haven't received the legally required number of votes, are finally passed. Now we'll move on to motions and resolutions, and we need to make a motion to waive the rules of counsel, to bring back Bill 423, Cover Your Assets for Final Action.
For preliminary approval, Madam President. For preliminary approval, and then final action.
Right, okay, thank you.
Let's waive the rule on Bill 423.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we need, I'm sorry. Okay. You've heard, okay, no discussion, the bill's now ready for final action today. Okay, the bill hasn't received the legally required number of votes, is passed. Now Councilman, Madam Chair, Madam President?
Board of Director, we don't, we didn't actually have preliminary approval.
Right.
We only waived the rules, and so we do preliminary discussion next.
We do that, I'm sorry, thank you, Councilman.
We need a motion to approve, I guess?
No, the clerk needs to read the bill.
Let the clerk tell us what to do, okay? Everybody else, thank you, Councilman.
So, we have a, we have a wave of the rule, now we'll need to have a motion, there's two additional motions, one to bring the bill back to the table, and then you'll need a motion to approve.
Okay, so we did the motion to waive the rules.
Motion to bring Bill 0423 back to counsel for final approval.
Preliminary.
No, a second, any discussion?
Sorry.
Seeing no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the bill's back, Councilman O'Connor.
I believe, if, Madam Clerk, are we ready for final vote at this point?
Did you all want me to read the bill, and then you do, you need to discuss it?
She's shaking her head no, and one's shaking her head yes.
We'll need to read the bill, let me read Bill 423, and then you guys can decide whether you want to discuss it or move it forward.
Thank you.
So, Bill 423 is a resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Public Safety to enter on behalf of the city into a five-year professional services agreement with Cover Your Assets LLC for a web-based secondary employment scheduling system in an amount not to exceed $853,925.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, you have heard the reading of the title of the bills, any discussion on the bill?
Madam Clerk, or Madam President?
You know, I'm getting confused too, yes.
Sorry, who's who? Sorry. So, thank you for holding the executive session, it really was a good background for me, even though I had voted on this bill five years earlier. I think it's important to realize for the public that there's historical context to this kind of outsourcing of police secondary assignments, that we, you know, have a contract in front of us today, and actually it seems to be like a well-run subcontractor, it seems to be really when you spread the cost over five years, a reasonable expenditure for a company that's got good transparency, good responsiveness, you know, does all the kinds of things that we want, for where we have police officers taking secondary employment, meaning as we learned in our kind of briefing, that's not executive information, but just general kind of background. So many times when permits are issued across the city, mostly road closures, or construction, or movie sets, those kinds of things, there is a requirement that there be police officers. And so we have to then put those kind of placements, or kind of like mini job listings on this software, so then officers, when they're not on their official duty, can opt in and do that in a fair way, and then all the costs are all recorded. I do think it's important to note that it's not just that we are paying for this some $180,000 a year contract, but that's important for the public to understand that there's, what I learned, I believe I got this generally right, there's about $11 million in pay that goes for those assignments, that is also coming out of our books, but most of that is paid by the people who have closed the road and that sort of thing, not all of it, but some of it. So there's, I think, an additional interest, something of interest to the public. One of the things I was sure to point out to the public safety leadership, and that I want to acknowledge here, because we've discussed it many times at council, is that there are some smaller subset of these road closures, or sometimes neighborhood festivals, which have, I think unfairly required police officers. And so we've discussed this at many different times, remember Councilwoman Rudiak being upset that one of her festivals could not afford its bill from public safety, and so couldn't afford to operate. And I had a similar situation in Morningside, where a annual event just could not, no longer afford the bill that it was being sent by the city, of like, well, you can't have your little foot race, fundraiser, because it causes so many kind of perpendicular street closures, that you have to have police officers at all of these, and here's this outrageously big bill, and so we're just a neighborhood group, and it was trying to close a street for a few hours in the morning, and they weren't able to do their event anymore. And the leadership said that they've improved that kind of assessment, right, where they've kind of worked with Domi, and they've worked with their own requirements, and so they work with the community group to maybe only have trained volunteers, sometimes crossing guards, which is a much cheaper situation. But for the public, when you think about this, this discussion is in a way a kind of subset or microcosm of the larger conversation that we see people calling for, and the reason we've gotten thousands of emails, is that, while I'm supportive of this contract today, it was a learning discussion about where and when do we require kind of full, fully-trained police officers, and are there situations where maybe that's, we could be using a different kind of staffing, whether that's volunteer staffing or city staffing, which is not a full police officer. And so we had a little bit of that discussion there, and I just wanted to kind of raise that as on our radar, we've talked about it in different ways here at council. So, I hadn't really thought about secondary employment in this way before, but are we too often assigning police officers where other, other people could just as easily fill in and ensure public safety, and ensure that, you know, what needs to happen, needs to happen? So, I just, I thought that was important to share in the context of the larger conversations we're having, but I will be voting yes today on this bill. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, any other members?
Just briefly, Madam President, just one point of clarification, which was really good that it came up in the, in this session we had, and that is that when the contract was initiated, council actually approved a 5% surcharge on top of the required funding that covers things like insurance and uniforms and all those kinds of things, and it was brought back to my attention that actually this program is cost-neutral, that that additional fee that it's tacked on, that comes in and goes into our secondary detail employment trust fund, actually covers the cost of this contract, and so it's really, there's no cost to taxpayers for the service. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Councilman, any other members? So I just want to say that I agree, Councilman Gross, you and I talk about the cost of doing small events in the city and how it's escalating in some areas, but I also think that there's times where our officers volunteer their times, and that's not recognized enough, that there's a lot of times that they volunteer to come to attend the community meetings, attend events, and while you like, that's a great community police relationship building when they're actually in the community doing those things on a volunteer basis, but I do think that there's times when they're required to have officers for some things, I'd like to see the officers, that they're able to volunteer, and maybe we should rethink some of the requirements overall, even aside from this, paying for horses to put up for a block, a block party or something like that, those are some of the things that we've heard over the years, and I do think that they're working on reducing some of those, I just want to make sure that that's something we don't forget, that these, there's a cost associated with having these events in the community, but there's a cost associated with not having them. So we make sure that we're doing the best we can to help make our neighborhoods great and livable. And I want to thank Councilman O'Connor for working through this with the Public Safety Department and the folks there, because he really, it was really a lot of work over the past few days, I just want to thank him for that.
Thank you, Madam President, thank you.
Thank you, any other members?
Madam President, Councilman Cockhill.
Yes, Councilman.
I just wanted to note that a lot of these secondary work, or detail work, as it's called, police officers really count on that, you know, with, with a salary that, starting out at $38,000 for a new recruit, you know, they kind of want to pay their bills and go on vacation and things like that, so, and being that it doesn't cost the taxpayers any money, I think it's a good program and a way for them to make sure money.
Thank you, Councilman, any other members? Okay, you've, the bills now are ready for final action, all in favor of the passage will vote aye when their name is called, those opposed will vote no, the clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess. Ms. Cockhill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
LaVell.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
This is Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
Ayes, eight, no, zero.
Thank you, the bills haven't received the legally required number of votes, is finally passed. And now we have Councilman LaVell, your lead bill.
Madam President, would a clerk please read Bill 486?
Bill 486, Resolution Providing for the Further Renewal by the Council of a Declaration of Disaster Emergency ratified by Council on March 17, 2020, to extend the effectiveness of the declaration for seven additional days, thereby making the declaration effective until July 7, in response to the ongoing public health emergency associated with the spread of the coronavirus.
Thank you, and we have a motion, we have a second, right? And any discussion? The bill's ready for final passage, all in favor will vote aye when their name is called, those opposed will vote no.
Reverend Burgess. Mr. Cockhill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
LaVell.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Kell Smith, President.
The bills haven't, oh, aye, I'm sorry.
Ayes, eight, no, zero.
The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes, is passed. And now that moves us on to meeting announcements, I have a cablecast public hearing is scheduled for tomorrow, Wednesday, July 1st, 5:00 PM, on Bills 200 and 201, as they relate to Racial Equity Commission and the Ten Commitments of Racial Equity. And that's going to be chaired by Councilman Burgess, correct?
I believe so, yes.
Councilman LaVell, okay, either one, either Councilman LaVell or Councilman Burgess, because the bills are sponsored. To register to speak at the hearing, please call the clerk's office at 412-255-2138 by 3:30 PM tomorrow, Wednesday, July 1st. You may also submit comments by email via thecityclerk@pittsburghpo.gov. Is there anything from the members?
Point of order, Madam Clerk, Madam President and Madam Clerk, I'm sorry to do this, I only, I just remember doing provisional vote on Cover Your Assets, was not the intention to do also final vote today.
I thought we did both.
Madam Clerk, do we have anyone else chime in? Because I remember, because I, you know, had lengthy discussion.
Let's make sure.
Yeah, I said like, I had lengthy discussion, and then we kind of voted, and we didn't vote, again, final vote.
I think you're right, Council, Madam Clerk.
I did a roll call for 423.
Right, we did a roll call vote, so once we pulled it, you waived the rules, and then we pulled it up, and you guys did your discussion on it, and we did a roll call vote for that bill 423, so that, you know.
I'll trust you on it, we only voted on it once, I thought there was kind of going to be a provisional and final.
You voted on the waiver of the rules, once you waived the rules, then you brought that back to the table.
We initially read it last week, correct?
And we held for one week.
Yeah, it was in standing committee, it was officially in standing committee last week, so once you waived the rule and brought it back to the table for discussion, we actually did do a final vote. If there, you could have made a motion to final vote it, if you wanted an additional motion, but once you waived the rules, you kind of opened the door to bring it back to the table. And we did, we did do a roll call vote, so.
Good enough for me.
I think we're covered.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Any other members? Saying that, I can't wait to end this meeting. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting?
Send them.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
He needs to adjourn, thank you.